Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular City Council meeting of the Richfield City Council, May 2, 2018. We have a couple visitors on the open forum this evening. At this time, I would ask Mr. Nelson Ward to step forward and tell us what's up. Mr. Ward, could you do me a favor? I keep forgetting this. Could you sign in and speak directly into the microphone?
Already done.
Please, thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Mayor Elliott and the City Council for allowing us to speak this evening. My name is Nelson Ward, and with me is David Kreisel-Koll, and also Erin Springer of Girl Scout Troop 11404. This year is Richfield Optimists Club is celebrating 60 years of bringing out the best in Richfield's youth. Since 1958, the club members have had the goal through the utilization of the Optimus Creed of practicing optimism as a daily philosophy. Our mission is to help children and those around them to appreciate their value and to support them in developing themselves to their full potential. Our club promotes an active interest in government and civic affairs. This includes respect for the law, patriotism, and community service. We encourage the development of youth in the belief that the giving of oneself in service to others will advance the well-being of humankind, their community, and the world. We are always open to guests and new members, and would like to invite anyone who is interested in coming to a meeting. We meet every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. in the community room at Richfield Bloomington Honda.
As Mr. Ward said, my name is Erin Springer, and I'm here tonight representing Girl Scout Troop 11404 to show our appreciation for the Optimist Club and the Avenue of Flags program. Our troop has helped with the flags for the past two years, putting up over 900 flags. And this fundraiser has helped finance our trip to India this past summer, and it has been a great way for us to get out and about in the city of Richfield. Because the four of us in our troop are graduating this June, a ninth-grade troop will be taking over this program, well, not taking over completely, but we're passing it on to them as a way to help them finance their trip abroad in the next few years. And the support of the Optimist Club with youth programs is just a wonderful partnership for all youth programs. Yeah.
Thank you.
The role of the Optimist Club of Richfield is to support a variety of programs for Richfield youth and grant academic scholarships to Richfield High School seniors. In order to do this, we fundraise. Our most visible project is the Avenue of Flags. The project places American flags on the boulevards of homes and businesses throughout Richfield. A tax-deductible donation of $40 to the club's foundation is how to get involved. 100% of the proceeds go to support programs for Richfield's youth. Our appearance today is to promote the Avenue of Flags as Memorial Day is fast approaching. May 28th, Memorial Day, will be the first of seven national flag holidays. The other flag holidays are Flag Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, Patriot Day, 9-1-1, Election Day, and Veterans Day. The Optimist Club partners with both the Richfield Boy and Girl Scout troops to do the placement and retrieval of the flags. We invite all residents of Richfield to participate in Avenue of Flags and show their patriotism and community pride. Please visit our website, www.richfieldoptimists.org, for more information and to make your $40 donation. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want you to know how much the council and city staff all appreciate what the Optimists do in and around Richfield. Thank you very much for coming in this evening and telling us about it.
Thank you.
... for your own neighborhood and participate in this fabulous program. Goes to a great cause, and it's a great organization, and we certainly thank you and appreciate you.
At this time, I'd invite you all to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, before we get to the real reason 98% of us are here, I'm going to have to make one motion, and that is to approve the minutes of the special City Council work session of April 24th, 2018, the special joint City Council and Transportation Commission work session, and the regular City Council meeting of April 24th, 2018.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Now, I know that Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez is excited to introduce our choral ensemble times 50.
Welcome, everybody, to your home here in Richfield City Hall. It is so exciting to see all of the family, the students, and the friends of the fifth grade STEM and RDLs choir, the combined choir. We are very excited and honored to have you, so thank you for coming. Bienvenidos a todas las familias y los estudiantes de el coro del quinto grado de STEM y RDLs. Bienvenido al City Hall, aquí es tu casa también, y estamos muy animados tenerlos aquí para la presentación de los estudiantes. Gracias.
There is a country full of dignity and light. There is a country full of freedom for no strife. Oh, dear, I sing. Oh, dear, I sing. Oh, dear, I sing, America. Oh, dear, I sing. Oh, dear, I sing. Oh, dear, I sing. Oh, dear, I sing, America. There is a nation in a land of liberty. There is a nation where the people all live free. Oh, dear, I sing. Oh, dear, I sing. Oh, dear, I sing, America. Oh, dear, I sing. Oh, dear, I sing. Oh, dear, I sing. Oh, dear, I sing, America. The red, the white, the blue, and white and blue. America, I sing this song for all of you. I love my country, so proudly take my stand. I love my country, so sing throughout the land. Oh, dear, I sing. Oh, dear, I sing. Oh, dear, I sing, America. Oh, dear, I sing. Oh, dear, I sing. Oh, dear, I sing. Oh, dear, I sing, America.
For the open is a way to port to carry you to freedom. Follow the drinking gorge. Follow the drinking gorge. Follow the drinking gorge. For the open is a way to port to carry you to freedom. Follow the drinking gorge. The river makes a mighty good road. The dead trees will show you the way. And the left foot, pegged foot, traveling on. Follow the drinking gorge. Follow the drinking gorge. Follow the drinking gorge. For the open is a way to port to carry you to freedom. Follow the drinking gorge. The river ends between two hills. Follow the drinking gorge. And there's another river on the other side. Follow the drinking gorge. Follow the drinking gorge. Follow the drinking gorge. For the open is a way to port to carry you to freedom. Follow the drinking gorge. Follow the drinking gorge. Follow the drinking gorge. For the open is a way to port to carry you to freedom. Follow the drinking gorge. Follow the drinking gorge.
Esteja viante, luz de peregrino. Esteja iluminada, hoy este camino. Esteja viante, luz de peregrino. Esteja iluminada, hoy este camino. Aleluia, aleluia, aleluia. Aleluia, aleluia, aleluia. Shining star, oh, light our way. Guide us on our path today. Shine your light so all can see. Beam your light so brightly. Shining stars shine from above. Guide us through peace and love. Guide us on our peaceful way. Bringing love to all we pray. Aleluia, aleluia, aleluia. Aleluia, aleluia, aleluia.
but nobody wanted. No one wants.
We're going to give them up, huh?
No. Cutie pies.
Yeah, they are. Thank you. The good thing about it is, is the next item is the hats off to hometown hits, and Councilmember Trautman has told me repeatedly he's not afraid to follow anybody, so we're going to let Councilmember Trautman lead off for us.
I can't recall when I said that, but...
My memory is very creative.
I won't challenge you on that, in that regard. So hats off for hometown hits. I want to thank everybody who came out last week to the Fall Dinner. It was a huge success. We had one of the largest crowds we've had. And Karen, our long-term naturalist, and Karen Trakes, how long has she been a part of that? 25 years, 20 years? Yeah, she was honored there and was in good health and walking around. We were really glad to see her up and about. The one announcement that I have this week as a reminder for families that want, we have so many activities that our Parks and Rec Board run throughout the summer. Take advantage of those, and I just want to bring families' attentions to our Passport Program. If, we invest a lot in these programs, but there is some cost. If the cost is too much of a burden, we do have some programs that will subsidize those costs for folks, especially for people that are on assistance. So if you're a part of our community, we want to make sure you have access to all the things that our community has to offer.
Thank you, sir. You've done well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. May the 11th, Friday, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., there will be at House of Prayer, 7625 Chicago Avenue, a Latinas Women's Fair. So if you know anyone that's interested, please join us. It'll be a good event for us to get together and talk about a number of issues, and you are certainly welcome to attend. And then on the same day, no, it's not, the next day, May the 12th, which is a Saturday, the United States Post Office will be picking up at every door, at every delivery that they make, they will be picking up non-perishable food which will go to the food shelves. And that is sponsored by the Post Office, by United Way, by the AFL-CIO, and other unions. And then number three, the Lindell Garden site is to be developed, and the developer is having an open house at Woodlake Nature Center, May the 12th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., and they will be discussing the development as they will propose it to the City Council. And then on May the 15th, from 9:30 to 10:30, there will be spring storytime, and that is for kids that are between the ages of three and five years old, and that will be at Woodlake Nature Center. And right after storytime, the kids will either participate in some type of related activity, or they will go on a hike. And then finally, I always like to acknowledge when we have a community builder that has contributed a lot to our community in making it what it is today. And Donna Peterson passed away in April, and she and her husband Roy raised two boys here, and they went through the school system. She was very instrumental in a lot of the doings to really make Richfield and not only, you know, contributed to the city in many, many other civic ways, but she was part of the Charter Commission. She was also part of the League of Women Voters, who made sure that when the planning department happened, that we have a planning commission. And they also championed the Human Rights Commission. So this is, the other important thing that the League of Women Voters did, and Donna was very instrumental in this too, is pushing for the city to have its own water supply, its own aquifers. So we offer our condolences to the Donna Peterson family. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I just have one item. It's one of our signature items that's in the spring, and that's the Memorial Day Ceremony at the Honoring All Veterans Memorial Park. This year, it's to be on Monday, May 28th, at 2:00 p.m., and Honoring All Veterans Memorial Inc. invites the public to pay tribute to our United States military veterans. Our featured guest speakers this year are Dr. Michael Turner and Judge Mitchell Turner, who are the brothers of naval veteran Lieutenant Charles J. Turner. This year's program will spotlight the life and service of Lieutenant Charles J. Turner, a Richfield native and first reported Minnesota casualty of the Gulf War Operation Desert Storm. Other highlights include the 34th Infantry Division Red Bull Concert Band, and 24 new veterans' names will be engraved on the memorial since last year. Those will be unveiled, bringing the total number of veterans honored to 1,002. Parking wheelchair access at the American Legion Post 435 parking lot at 6429 Portland Avenue. The event is free and open to the public, hail rain or shine, under the shelter in case of rain. Please bring your own chairs. I look forward to all of you being there. It is a wonderful gathering of the community in honor of our veterans and honoring the people that are engraved on the plaques over there. Thank you. Councilmember Howard.
I don't have much today. I wanted to call attention to a work session that we have coming up on Monday, May 21st, at 6:00 p.m. to discuss the city's policy and work around naturally occurring affordable housing. I know that's an issue that we've had discussion about and a lot of community interest, and so that will be a joint work session of the HRA and the Richfield City Council on Monday, May 21st, at 6:00 p.m. And then my other update is one that everybody knows by just going out the road onto 66th Street, that construction season has begun, and I just want to thank our residents for their patience, which is going to be a challenge, but continue to reach out to city staff, to council members, and let us know, you know, if there's ways we can help improve that experience. It's, we want to snap our fingers and have it all done in a matter of moments, but we know that's not how it goes, and so thank you to all the city staff and workers that are working very hard to make that project a reality, and to the residents, thank you for your patience during that big construction project. It's now over half over by virtue of this year's work begun, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez.
I have a few items tonight. Just a reminder to everybody that the citywide garage sale is coming, and it is May 17th to May 19th, and there's information on our city website about that where you can get maps. Farmer's Market season has begun, so every Saturday at Vets Park, we have our Richfield Farmer's Market. There's a lot of prepared food, vegetables, fruit, and it's a really nice way to build community here in Richfield. You get to know a lot of your neighbors going to the farmer's market, and that's Saturday 7:00 a.m. to noon. And a couple more items. Public Works Department is going to be having an open house on Saturday, May 19th, from 11:00 to 1:00. There's going to be booths, stands, information, activities for kids, and that is at the Public Works Garage. The address is 1901 East 66th Street. Another interesting event in the community that is coming up on May 19th, which is a Saturday, from 3:00 to 4:30, is a compost critters activity at Woodlake Nature Center, and that costs $3. And it's an opportunity to explore the different types of bugs and bacteria and things that help us make our food waste into compost. And lastly, one of my favorite things that I like to do in the summer is Unity in the Community is an event that brings folks from across Richfield to Veterans Park on May 24th, which is a Thursday from 5:00 to 7:30. And it's just an opportunity for community members to come out, enjoy some free fun. There's food, crafts, music, activities for families. Police will be there, fire will be there, and it's a way, Unity in the Community is specifically designed to really focus on celebrating the diversity that we have here in Richfield, and it's a great, again, way to meet your neighbors, but also family activity.
Thank you. Councilmember Trautman reminded me that we have one other item to address this evening. Pastor Fred Owens and his family have come to visit. We welcome you dearly and would like you to come up and say some words for the community and... and introduce yourself and your family, please.
Hey, I want to say hello to everybody. And we are so blessed to be a member of the Richfield community.
Pastor, I'm going to let you use the mic there so everybody can hear you.
Like I said, we are so blessed to be part of the Richfield community. And, you know, we had a tragedy in our life. We was the family that was in the accident on February 26th and lost our daughter, our six-year-old daughter, you could see on the poster. But we are blessed to be a part of the Richfield community, and we want to say thank you for, to the City Council, to our leaders. We want to say thank you to the fire and police who was there on the scene. And myself and my daughter right there, we was unconscious and my daughter who didn't make it. But the Richfield Fire and Police was there. And I'm just so blessed that they was there. I say to the people in Richfield, you don't realize what kind of community you live in. You really don't. And, I mean, Richfield came out and blessed us. We didn't cook for about a whole month, but every day somebody had a different meal at our door. They even brought tickets for the kids to go see Harlem Globetrotters, to stay at the Marriott at the mall. I mean, people, the outpouring of love was so wonderful, and we are just so humble, and we just are so thankful. And we are just so blessed to be part of the Richfield community. And if you ask me, I will tell you, Richfield the best place to live. So that's just how I feel, all right? And God has truly blessed us. We came here to build a ministry, and this week is our first organizational meeting. We plan to build and start a ministry in Richfield. And I'm not just talking about a place where people go to church on Sunday. I'm talking about a place where people get out in the community and help the community and work together as a team. We are blessed to live in Richfield. Everybody sitting in here is blessed to live in Richfield, because I really believe that we are partners in this city. And again, I can't thank you. I talked to the mayor on the phone. I talked to Councilman Troutman. I had lunch with him this week, a breakfast of coffee. But I'm just happy to be here, and I love you, and you can't do nothing about it.
Yeah, we love you back.
Okay, and I ain't going nowhere. I'm buying the house right here, invest right here. My son, Justin, he's an honor roll student. He been on the honor roll since he been in the middle school, and his goal is to be an orthopedic surgeon, a politician, and a naval reserve captain and surgeon. And he's doing good. And Jada's doing good. Her goal is to be a pediatric cancer surgeon. So I, and we didn't come here to Richfield, debate, and always get handouts. We came here to make a difference in our community. If we're going to be here, then we need to make a difference. And I just want to say thank you. I thank you. I thank you.
And our baby life was cut short because she wanted to be a cardiologist, not a old doctor. And Justin, tell the mayor what you want to be.
All right.
Secretary of Health and Human Service. Thank you for being here. And thank you for the confidence and everything you bring into this room. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for showing us that, you know, that you really care, because we do.
At this time, I would move the approval of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Now, once again, we'll shine the light on City Manager, Mr. DeBage, for the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. For those in the audience, both here and at home on TV, the consent calendar contains several items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved and require no further council action. Item A is consideration of the approval of a resolution appointing Information Technologies Manager Jane Scov as the alternate director on the Local Government Information Systems Board of Directors. Item B is consideration of the approval of a maintenance agreement with the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District for the specified culvert within Taft Park. Item C is consideration of the approval of a first reading of an ordinance amending sign regulations. Item D, consideration of the approval of a resolution amending the Richfield Urban Village Planned Unit Development to allow McDonald's to make minor site modifications and replace all menu board signs with dynamic display signs. Item E is consideration of the approval of a resolution amending a conditional use permit and a variance to allow an expansion to increase capacity from 28 beds to 32 beds at Progress Valley, which is at 30878th Street East. And finally, item F, consideration of the approval of a resolution for a site plan review and variances for a restaurant at 6600 Penn Avenue. And that concludes tonight's consent agenda.
May I have a motion?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar is passed. Next item on the agenda is Councilmember Troutman.
All right, thank you. The, this item is a public hearing for consideration of an approval of a resolution approving the final plat of Norah Corner that will combine four parcels, 6629 and 6545 Penn Avenue, and 2208 and 2210 66th Street West, into three parcels in order to allow the construction of a previously approved restaurant, which is Dunkin' Donuts. So we would, we now are going to conduct the public hearing. So this is a, this is a public hearing. Does anybody have any comments on this, the change to the plat for Dunkin' Donuts? Any comments?
Moved to close the public hearing?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public meeting is closed. Councilmember?
The council meeting is closed. I would move that we approve a resolution granting approval of the final plat of Norah Corner that will combine the four parcels, 6529 and 6545 Penn Avenue, 2208 and 2210 66th Street West, into three parcels in order to allow construction of a previously approved restaurant, Dunkin' Donuts.
Second. Comments?
Yes, oh, we have a.
I just, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I just wanted to give you an update on the site. I spoke with the property owner this afternoon. They said they really are only waiting for tonight's action before they take the next steps to demolish the building. The demolition would definitely start in May, could even be done by the end of the month. They, they're contractually obligated to deliver the site to Dunkin' Donuts in early August. Dunkin' then would start their build-out, which apparently is a fairly quick process as Dunkin' is planning to open in September. That's their hopes. With the Flowerama Building, you may recall that the city, we have instituted a new Penn Avenue facade grant program for the Flowerama Building. The property owners have applied for funds to help dress that building up. They have at least one franchise sandwich place submitted a letter of intent. They are waiting to see the building get improved a little bit in hopes of getting even more interest, and they hope to find a great tenant for that building as well. Just wanted to give you that update.
Thank you.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is consideration of the approval of, consideration of the approval of a resolution awarding the sale of $9,975,000 General Obligation Street Reconstruction Bonds, Series 2018A. Included, I don't know that I really need to really do a lot of this, because we have, Mr. Mayor, we have, we have someone poised to kind of explain, you know, the, the action that we're about to take. And maybe I should turn it over and, should I do that, Mr. Mayor?
You're in charge.
I will turn it over to you, and then Mr. Regis is available, as is Mr. DeBage. And they are, they're the ones that know the nuts and bolts of this. And we certainly appreciate you coming, because you always provide us a really good presentation. So thank you for being here.
And you let Councilmember Garcia stick to her legal training, not her accounting training. Much easier.
Exactly.
Perfect. Thank you. Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers and Associates. And as introduced this morning at our office, we did take bids for the city's $9,770,000 of General Obligation Street Reconstruction Bonds. The project or the money will assist with the financing of the 2018 Millen Overlay Project along with the 66th Street Reconstruction. As what we've done in the past, we did have the bonds rated prior to the sale this morning. I'd like to again congratulate you. S&amp;P affirmed the double A-plus rating for the city of Richfield. I believe a copy of the full rating report was included in the council packet, but there are a couple highlights that I just want to take a minute and recognize you for. Standard and Poor's assigns the double A-plus long-term rating to the 2018A General Obligation Bonds. At the same time, they affirm that rating for all of the cities previously issued your outstanding debt. The outlook for the rating is a stable outlook. The rating reflects in S&amp;P's or Standard and Poor's assessment some of the following factors for the city. A strong economy, very strong management with very strong financial policies and practices under S&amp;P's Financial Management Assessment methodology. Adequate budgetary performance, a very strong budgetary flexibility with the available fund balance in fiscal 2016 at 27% of operating expenditures. Just a note throughout the report, they do reference 2016. That's because that was the most recent final audit that was available. We talked about the preliminary numbers for 17, but 16 was the final numbers that they have on file. S&amp;P also recognizes the city's strong liquidity, the adequate debt and contingent liability position, and the city's rapid amortization with 66, or more than 66% of the debt scheduled to be retired within a 10-year period. So again, congratulations on maintaining the rating. As I've said, I think it just continues to show the strength of staff in you as a council with your financial management and the decisions that you make for the long-term financial well-being of the city. So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
With that, I am happy to say that we received seven bids. A detail of all of the bids received is included in the packet that Chris just handed out. The low bid was FTN Financial Capital Markets. They're based out of Memphis, Tennessee, and their bid was 3.069%. Just as a comparison, when I was here about a month ago and we did preliminary numbers, we had estimated 3.32%. So not quite 30 basis points lower than what we had estimated about a month ago. A couple things I do want to note with that. With the Millen Overlay Project, we did pledge tax levy or taxes to pay the debt service with that. However, it is anticipated that that annual debt service will actually be paid with franchise fees. So the levy will be canceled out with a franchise fee payment on the Millen Overlay portion. The second thing I want to note is that when we were here about a month ago and called for the sale of the bonds, we were estimating that it would be $9,975,000 for the issue size. You will see that we were able to reduce it. We did receive a premium bid. So what that means is you still will have the 9.8 million for your street projects, but because of the way the costs came in and the bids came in, we were able to reduce the bond size slightly for that. With this, if you do decide to move forward and award the bonds tonight, funds would be available on May 31st. I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we are recommending awarding to FTN Financial Capital Markets at the rate of 3.069%.
Questions? Staff, any additional comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I would ask Ms. Kurtz, there was a premium with that bid.
Yes.
And so we get, we get the 9.8 million or 9. whatever, but what was it, what was the exact reduction to the city along with the great rate we got?
The actual, the amount of the premium was $151,774. So with that, we were able to reduce, so between the premium, some lower discount and cost of issuances, the amount of the bond was reduced by $225,000.
Yeah, that, and that's significant. That's a significant savings to taxpayers. Thank you.
I think it's important that you brought that out, City Manager. A lot of times when we have the financial figures and presented from mailers, a lot of numbers, and we all kind of glaze over a little bit, but when you look to the bottom line, the interest savings, when we sold bonds at a lower price and everything, there, we generate $200,000, $300,000 in savings that aren't, aren't open and obvious, but they're there. And so I think it's important that you bring it out so that the citizens know what the staff is doing, what the financial side of the city is doing in terms of both bonds for our capital projects, but also for what we're doing in trading them and reoffering them and bringing them in at a different interest and saving money in that manner. It's one of the, one of the hidden ways that we maintain the ratings that we've got and everything else. Just the financial management, the 12 years I've been here is outstanding, and I don't have a clue how you do it, but I appreciate it every day. So thank you much for that.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to encourage folks, because, you know, this is, this is a wonderful presentation, but if you really want to, to do some homework yourself, if you look at the staff reports in there online at our website, and if you go to the City Council and click on that, there's the council agenda and the whole staff reports, and read it all, it will give you details that are a lot easier to understand than, you know, than reading the report that we got now. So we have, we, at least we get this ahead of time, and we get to read it and kind of digest it a little bit. But I think we've come to appreciate the fact that we have a very, very strong staff that understands, you know, the financial situation that we have before us, you know, and the challenges that are presented to us, because everything, the prices on everything goes, go up. And we have challenges, because we have to, we have mandates that come all the way from the federal government to the state government, and they pass it on to the local government. So I want to thank the staff, too, and Ellers and Associates for working hard and making us sound and financially solid. And if, and if there's no other comments. I will move that we approve the resolution awarding the sale of General Obligation Street Reconstruction Bonds, Series 2018A, in the original aggregate principal amount of $9,975,000, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivering, delivery and providing for their payment.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is passed. City managers report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The only thing I want to report is, you know, last year we had what I thought was a very successful commission recognition event that was in June, and so we're looking at doing that again this year. And we're looking at scheduling that event for June 26th. So hopefully, and we'll have it outside, and hopefully it'll be great weather, and we'll have and we'll have great turnout like we have had in the past. And I think it's a great way to recognize all the people that volunteer and serve on commissions for the city of Richfield. And that's the only report I have.
Lot of hopefully's there. I'm going to hold you accountable.
Yeah, I know. Well, when I can control the weather, I'll be able to say.
You keep throwing those out there and I keep wondering, so. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I will move claims and payroll.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I will move to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota statute 13 D.05 subdivision 3, to conduct a performance evaluation of the city manager.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to go into a private meeting to do an evaluation. We shall return shortly.
Yeah.
I told you.
You got the decorative one?
We have one on the first floor.
Okay.
Having returned from the closed executive session, I'll reopen this meeting. The closed executive session was convened as permitted to evaluate an employee's performance pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision three A, the said employee being the city manager. I know that summary has to be prepared and presented at the next council meeting, so what I'm gonna do is just highlight some of the things we talked about that have gone on in the past year that I think most people in the community are familiar with some, if not all of them. A couple of things that happened, we've turned the corner in providing some additional diversity and inclusion workshop and training for twenty-five of our staff. We've received an additional grant of four point five million from Hennepin County to complete the funding for the Seventy-seventh Street underpass. Community development has taken off and is not only shining, but is actually hitting all four corners of our community, stretching the development staff, but we're keeping up and I think in the next two or three years, we're going to continue to see continued growth throughout the community, including most of the city center, running from Lindell up through Nicklet, including the hub. Liquor stores have been rebranded and are making record profits, returning the return investment going into the parks and the recreation departments, which benefits all our children and everybody in the community that likes to be outside and enjoy the parks and amenities. Police department has added, I think, my count may be off a little bit, but I think we sworn in and shook and shaken hands with nine or ten new officers who are incredibly young, but very diverse, very excited to be here and are going to turn out to be wonderful keepers of the peace in our community. We made some tough decisions over some things that happened two or three years ago that came to fruition that this year in that we won an arbitration against an officer that we felt was detrimental both to the city and to our police department in and of itself, second time it's ever happened. And I think that the staff and the people that made the decision to appeal that arbitration showed a lot of courage because if had we not won, it wouldn't have been catastrophic, but it would have been hard to overcome. But we won and we move forward. We also won another trial from an individual that sued us a number of times and that one was rewarding also. So the development and all that is nice. Things as simple as two hundred thousand dollar interest savings that we heard about tonight are the things that are the lifeblood of keeping the community healthy and moving forward. And as one of the council members said in the back room, we have outstanding staff, but a staff doesn't run itself, it doesn't guide itself, it doesn't move in the same direction. By their work, it runs because the direction that comes from the top. And in that regard, I think to a person in the back room, we all commended Steve DeBitch in the manner that he keeps this city moving forward, always By their work, it runs because the direction that comes from the top. And in that regard, I think to a person in the back room, we all commended Steve DeBitch in the manner that, that he keeps this city moving forward, always has its eyes on its goal. And we've had, like all the communities metrowide, we have our ups and downs. Right now, given the fact that for two years running, we're the hottest real estate community, city pages named us the best suburb, there was some interesting comments in regards to that from Richfield residents that, that obviously don't share the same joy we do in living here as, as, or as most of us do. But they're entitled to their opinions, but, but we're on a roll, it's working well, moving forward, I think is, is, is excited as this community has been probably since the sixties, fifties and sixties when we first really started to build out, so it's got an exciting future. And I think it's, it's going to be onward and upward. With that being said, we took a look at some of the, the salaries for city managers community wide and as always, I think the word the Star Tribune used is we're quiet and unassuming at the same time, we're right the middle of the pack in terms of salaries for staff, salaries for our city manager. And I don't think that anybody that works here has any interest in being the top, but, but they want to be compensated according to, to what they do for the city and the progress the city has made. And with that in mind, we have agreed that the city manager is entitled to a two point eight five percent raise, which just happens to coincide with what exactly he asked for. And so we've got a resolution before us that indicated, well, first of all, I'll, I'll make the resolution. Be it resolved by the city of council, the city of Richfield as follows. The following section of the employment agreement between the city of Richfield, Minnesota and Stephen L. DeBitch, city manager dated February twenty-second, two thousand and five, is amended as follows. Section five, salary. Employee agrees to increase the city manager's total base annual salary of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and four dollars to one hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents effective January first, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is passed. Congratulations, Mr. DeBitch.